Time is 7:00 PM. I'll call to order the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for May 10, 2023. Attendances this evening is by Zoom or in person to City Hall Auditorium, room 218140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. Call in at 1646-558-8656. Meeting ID 795-950-735. Passcode 907148. Moving on to agenda item number two. Attendants serving on the commission this evening in person, Jim Babinski, Greg Perisino, Donna Greco, serving remotely is Tom Tullman, Diane Carroll, Donovan Riley. I'm present Greg Mealy and also attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifer. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A for 41923. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the minute.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
opposed? So.
Alright.
Time is 7:01. Moving on to agenda item number four, public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM, May 10, 2023. City Hall Auditorium, room 218140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A special exception 23-03 in site plan 1446. Applicant Haynes Aggregates -Torrington LLC and ONG Industries, Inc., location 3217 Winston Road and 3345 Winston Road. Proposal 6.4 earth excavation and accessory retail sales continued from 4/1923. Serving on the commission this evening, Jim Babinski, Greg Perisino, Donna Greco, Tom Tullman, Diane Carroll, Donovan Riley, myself Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifer. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice?
We read last time.
We're all set. Nothing else. Okay. Does the applicant attendants?
I ask Mr. Chairman, for the record, Kenneth Rika, professional engineer and licensed land surveyor. And with me tonight in the audience are Adam Peters from Haynes Aggregates, Richard Warren from ONG Industries, and attorney Peter Hurst. I'll be available to answer any questions that I may not.
And can you speak a little louder?
Sure.
I have a little difficulty with the sound here.
I think we maxed ours out.
Okay, I'll start over. For the record, my name is Kenneth Rika, professional engineer and licensed land surveyor. And with me tonight in the audience are Adam Peters from Haynes Aggregate LLC, Richard Warren from ONG, and attorney Peter Hurst. And they are there. Richard will be speaking to the commission after I finish, and they're also there to answer any questions that you may have of them. I'd like to start by saying that, reminding the commission that we're not proposing anything new with this application and this two-year renewal. My clients simply want to keep mining in accordance with the terms of the 2021 approval that they garnered two years ago. I'd also like to note that at that 2020 approval, my clients agreed to extend the 400-foot buffer from Burmud Road to 600 feet. That 400-foot buffer was was relevant to the project for the past 22 years. We've actually been at this now 24 years since 1999. So this is the 12th two-year renewal. And at that very last one, the clients agreed to a 50% increase in the buffer to keep the mining operations another 200 feet further from Burmud Road. At this point, I would like to ask Jeremy if I can share my screen.
You're all set. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, what you see in front of you is the overall mining plan. Areas in the blue shade are the areas that are currently proposed and being actually it's the current limits of excavation. The red dash lines around those are represent the lines of the 2021 approved excavation areas. Both sites are within those areas and my clients can want to continue working in those areas for the next two years. And the green lines that are parallel represent just the proposed mining long-term. So the red lines will be changing over time as we move forward. That's what I have. I'd like to now ask Richard Warren, who's in the audience, to step forward and speak about some of the issues that were raised at the last public hearing.
Thank you, Ken. Once again, Richard Warren from ONG Industries, co-applicant for the, for this, for this package tonight. Confirming what Ken has said, this application is a repeat of the last, the last permit that was renewed in 2020, 2021. We are, we came in together, Haynes and ONG Industries, to combine the properties, to combine the uses of the properties which we consider to be beneficial both for economic reasons for us and then as well as beneficial to actually using the quarry rather than having two sets of operations, two sets of processing operations. We are looking to use one on the Haynes parcel. There will be blasting on both, both properties, both ownership. There is two separate ownerships currently, but there will be no more blasting, no more processing than has been previously approved. We have submitted after the last public hearing, I believe the commission has written responses from, from the joint applicants. I do not want to necessarily repeat all of those, but I would like to provide just some summary if that's acceptable. The largest concern, again, I want to reiterate that we are not looking for any greater height, any greater depth. There is no greater request than what has previously been approved by this commission. This is a repeat of the last approval that was granted. There, there may have been some concerns that were raised. I'm not sure how they changed, but the plans that Mr. Rika has submitted are roughly the same plans as the last application. Some of the issues that were raised during the last hearing were concerns about the blasting and the impacts that that has on our surrounding neighbors. I would like to submit to the commission a package of blast monitoring locations. There are two pages that are color-coded where the blast occurs for each of the property owners and where the monitoring is done for that. May I please? There's, we've seven copies there. Last monitoring is done because there is a requirement under under blasting regulations that are federally monitored. And so the blasting company is obligated to pronounce what is being done, what is being blasted, levels of explosives that are being used. And any monitoring that is then done has been historically reported to the city. It's reported to us. It's available if there are any questions. The monitoring that has been done historically has never exceeded the federal guidelines. And those guidelines are set originally from, from the Federal Bureau of Mines. They are based on vibrations and air overpressure designed, the design limits are meant to eliminate the possibility of structural damage. So remaining below these federal limits is why we believe that any blasting that we have, that we have in fact performed has not been the cause of any damage that may be claimed. And we can provide that if anybody requests information, we can add monitoring. I believe in one of our response, one of our answered responses, we've suggested that if there is a request for about concern, particularly about the water piping to Lake Ridge, we suggested that if we need to place a new monitoring location, we certainly are willing to consider that. So monitor for port to the city, the guidelines. Also, when blasting is performed, the, as a, as a permit condition, blasting is notified. I'm sorry if I need to explain that, by the way, the color coding on there, the, the orange X is roughly the blast face for each of the two locations. I've separated out because they are two different properties. So the cover page is the blast location that is currently for the Haynes property and the four monitoring sites that they use. And then the second page is the blast face location at the ONG upper quarry and the blast monitoring locations that are in place for that. Pardon me for not clarifying that. When, when blasts are performed, there are calls made under the permit conditions to neighbors that have requested it. There is in that call notification, a component that says if there are any issues, if there are any problems, there are contact numbers. I am, I'm a contact person for the ONG parcel. There is an email and contact number given when the recorded message goes out for the Haynes blast. And as a permit, as a requirement of permit renewal in the permit application, you see the complaint log that was generated based on calls received during this last two-year period. We don't dispute that there have been prior complaints, that there have been prior concerns, but in the application, we are required to report what had been reported to us. And as I think I wrote in the cover letter, we were surprised at the concerns that were raised because after blasts, we have not gotten those calls. And I would expect that going forward, we will receive certainly more calls going forward. But the mechanism has been in place where we are willing to respond. We are willing to address any concerns that are raised from blasting. The, the second item that I would like to just summarize is our operations. People were concerned about truck traffic, trucking and potential dust. We met after the hearing with city staff. We have agreed that we are willing to both monitor more closely and address any concern to that effect. If we need to set a queuing location off of Winston Road, we are certainly willing to discuss how that can best be accomplished, given the constraints of the site, the constraints of the road. We, we would prefer to be good neighbors. We'd prefer never to get calls or complaints. And as far as I'm concerned, I'd be happy again to personally introduce myself and provide my part. We, we intend, we've been, we've got a good track record in town as both ONG and Haynes. We'd like to maintain that good track record. And we think that we, the request to renew what has already been approved previously, we think is a reasonable request. The last thing that I would like to point out to you is there were questions raised. And as, as an active mining operation, the sites are inspected randomly unannounced through mine safety and health. There is testing, monitoring done when those inspections occur. We don't know that they're occurring. We have never, neither location has ever received a citation for anything, anything related to dust, noise, anything that they were checking on. So not only is the, the permit at the local level of, are we following guidelines there, but we are required to meet state and federal guidelines which we are in compliance with. I believe that is roughly my summary addressing the concerns that were raised. I'm available with parties here to answer any questions if it's, if it goes to further discussion before that. I don't know the process time-wise.
Mr. Warren, you had mentioned about queuing the vehicles. I know there was some conversation about vehicles staging prior to the allotted start time.
To the gate being open, correct. So if, if, if they are in fact, unfortunately, if the start time is seven o'clock, trucks need to get there. We, we, we aren't airlifting them in at that hour. So if, if we will, we will address.
Obviously, these trucks are sitting there idling and.
They, they may be depending on when they are, when they are dispatched or when they leave their own homes, if they are a private hired hauler, depending on the time as they're trying to work around traffic issues of their own, trying to get the most out of their workday. It is possible that they are there waiting. So we will, we will address either accessing, allowing access to the gate without starting production or processing before the allotted hours, but we can, we can certainly address keeping the trucks out of, of travel path. Yes.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Warren at this point?
No.
Yeah, I'm not called queuing thing. Have you had, you have a plan right now or are you just saying we will have a plan?
No, because I apologize. We.
Because in my opinion, you should have a plan. If these people have a concern, you should have the plan in place, already taken care of. So when you came here tonight, you should say, this is what we're gonna do. Not, we can talk to you later, but approve it and then we'll talk later. Isn't that the wrong way to go?
My apologies. I.
No, no, seriously. Do you think that's the wrong way to go? Yes or no?
No, no, that is not the wrong way to go. What you are proposing is, was not the wrong way to go. We should have come with.
Because you're the one that's coming here for the approval. They have the concerns, but you're not giving a solution. You're giving a, a possible solution, but it's not final. That they could look at, that we could look at. It's all talk. These are talking points in my opinion. Okay. And that's all they are. They're not facts. This is what we're gonna do. We're gonna maybe push this. We're gonna allow this. You're saying things, but they're not happening. They're not in an approval letter to say this is what we will do. Okay? There's another issue on the, on the Lake Ridge water lines. Now, I'm not saying that it happened because of you or it didn't happen because of you, but I'm sure Lakewood should have some type of documentation from either the installer of the water line or Torrington Water Company. I don't know who does it and how those breaks happened. Were they shift? Were they old pipe? You know, who knows? Okay. You know, so I'm kind of on your side too on that end where, hey, listen, you know, give me the documentation to say that you can prove that we caused this. All right. So, and I'm not saying you didn't cause it, but that's an issue also. And again, the facts aren't there. So for you to say, well, we can do it later. To me, that doesn't fly. Okay. In other words, all the facts should be here. The queuing, you know, every, everybody should bring their facts in. Should it be the audience or should it be, you know what? And a lot of the, the neighbors have brought their facts in. But as for Lakewood, they have not brought their facts in. They made a comment, but they haven't said this is what actually happened. We have documentation and our contractors said this and blah, 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 and so on, so forth. That's where I'm coming from. But as for the queuing, I feel that you should have came here aggressively. This is our plan and let's move forward. But you didn't do that.
Understood. Apologies. I hear what you're saying.
Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? Anybody remotely?
Tom.
No.
I have one question. Is it outside contractors that are typically queuing or is it ONG and Haynes trucks that are queuing?
Having heard the comment only at the last public hearing, that's honestly not an answer I have. Adam, do you know?
Damon, dress for the record, please.
Adam Peters, Haynes Materials. I don't know of a time that we understand that there has been an issue on Winston Road. If there was some sort of date or some sort of understanding of when that's happened, but most, if there is, I would assume that to be a customer, a private customer. Haynes does not do any trucking in Torrington and ONG controls their own dispatch.
ONG would not, would not send the trucks to be idling there before the gate was ready. We were close enough that we can, we can get there on time, at time to open the gate.
How much activity takes place right at 7:00 AM?
I suppose I would ask Mr. Leonard truthfully. That was the individual.
It sounds like that's one of the major concerns that there's.
I mean, that's.
Trucks queuing, they're, they're active at a very early hour.
And, and it's, I don't believe that it is daily, every day. I believe it is market driven. It depends on the, the dispatch demand any given day. So there, there, I'm sure there are days when there are no trucks there, which is why I don't have a plan. I apologize. There are, there are days when there's been a large order and we've put 20 trucks, called, called for 20 trucks. And if they show up trying to get in to be first, then it could be an issue. I think 20 is an exaggeration. I should, I should not have, I should not have jumped that part. My apologies again. So I, I don't, I don't have an accurate count answer for you. But my, so which is why my, my discussion of proposing a plan or proposing to make a plan, I would have to address how many trucks we need to prepare for. And I don't know that number. So I was going to, I thought that we would review as the season continues, how much is needed and address what land is available and, and take them off Winston Road. And we could do it immediately just opening the gate without starting work. But I'd like, I didn't want to off the cuff propose that. Sorry.
Well, opening the gate early means you're opening quarry early versus the hours that are allotted.
Well, that's, that's sort of is, is, you know, creating.
Interpretation.
A limitation, right? Without understanding that we can operate before a certain hour.
Right.
It's tough to make a plan to say we're going to operate before that hour.
May I speak?
I'm sorry?
Patrick Haynes, Haynes Materials. I'm on Zoom. May I speak?
Go ahead, Mr. Haynes.
Apologize, apologize. I thought I would just address the, the queuing. We, we as Haynes have been operating for roughly 20 years.
One second, please. Mr. Haynes, I apologize. We're having difficulty hearing already. Please keep the jibber jabber in the audience at zero, please. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Haynes, please continue.
So thank you. Again, Patrick Haynes from Haynes Materials. So Haynes Materials has been operating for, I think roughly 12 renewal cycles up there in ONG possibly longer. The queuing issue has taken us a little by surprise because the general business flow has not changed in the time that we've been up there. And I do believe this is the first time that we had heard any concern about queuing. And I believe it was one person who had mentioned the issue of, of queuing. And so it took us a little bit by surprise. And so the idea of not having a plan, I think is a little bit due to the fact that we didn't really realize there was an issue. And I think part of our idea was to work with the city to ensure that we did have, if there was an issue to, that we did work with the city and make sure that the queuing was done so that it worked for everybody in the area. But again, in, in many years, this is the first time that we had heard there was an issue in our, and in this renewal, our, you know, the business flow is going to be very similar to what it's been since we've been operating up there.
Thank you. Any other input from remote commissioners? We're all set.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Ever anything else to add or continue with?
I don't believe so.
No.
Nope. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
All right. At this point, we'll go into the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And that also goes for Zoom. Okay. And as a reminder, we are not going to hear the same testimony that we heard last meeting. If you have something new to add, please do so. Would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Susan Matts, 300 Cliffside Drive, Torrington. At the last hearing, I asked for a copy of the environmental impact study. I still have not received a copy of it and I've been told that one has never been done. It just seems absurd to me that there is no study done on how this is affecting the environment. Could you address why there has been no environmental impact study done?
Our files go back to 2012 and there is not one in the, in our files. So previous, previous to that, I have, I have no knowledge. It would have to be up to the applicant to respond to that.
Can ONG or Haynes respond to that?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Reck.
Is it, protocol wise, would you like us to answer all the questions at the end or would you like us to interject and answer questions as we continue?
Probably as we go. Otherwise, we're gonna get jammed up here and we'll be here all night.
Okay, I, I can do my best to answer this is, is that these, none of the city's regulations require an environmental impact study for this type of operation. Therefore, none has been done. They are not required by the state of Connecticut and they are not required federally. So the reason why they're not done is, is that they are not required.
I'm sorry. I spoke to someone at the.
In the microphone, please, ma'am.
I spoke to someone at the state DEP and he was surprised that one had not been done. He thought that one was required with each renewal. So I.
Remember who that was?
I, I have his name written down at home. I should have brought it with me, but I will call Mr. Leifert with his name. Well, you spoke with him. He called you.
Yeah, all I did was, so I did get a call from someone at the, and, and all I did was go over what was required in our regulations and what wasn't required.
Whoever it was that you spoke to is who I spoke to who said he thought that they were required.
Right, but they don't require it. Am I correct? He didn't require, ma'am, ma'am. He didn't explain to you that they required it, correct?
The state? Yes. I think, I think he was saying that the state required that.
You said he was surprised that we hadn't done an environmental study and that we didn't require it. Does the state, did he tell you specifically the state requires an environmental impact study?
That's what he inferred. I can't.
Inferring. So he didn't say it specifically.
Um, I.
I mean, we're getting a counter data here. Cause we have, we have two situations here where, where the engineer is saying that there's no federal requirement, there's no state requirement and there's no city requirement. And now you're talking to somebody who's part of deep and he's telling you something else. So this is very confusing.
I understand. I have his message on my phone. I will find it and I will read it to you, but please go on.
Nice. Is it possible just to ask what department that was? There, there, but, but there are many divisions of DEP. So are you aware? Okay. Sorry.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sig Fifa. I'm at 441 Evergreen Road in Torrington. That's Lakewood. So I've been here since 1988. At the beginning, the, in the early days, we actually felt the tremors and heard the alarms. That has not been the case for a while. And I'm fortunate that, and Haynes does make the calls and we are alerted and after we get the call and we listen, it's quiet and there are no tremors. So that's positive. But what we're concerned about is, and there's not much we can do about this, has been in, in functioning for 25 years or 22 years, you said, is the devastation to the mountains and what they look like and what we have to see every time we drive by it. So my question is, how long does this go on? How many more renewals are there? When does this all end? And number two is, do these companies have a obligation, a legal obligation for restoration? And what will that restoration be? Trees and shrubbery? I mean, eventually they have to stop. Eventually though, they're prohibited from going any further. Can do, we get some kind of indication as to when that will take place, how far into the future, when we can anticipate that and what their obligations will be once that takes place. Thank you.
Hold it close to folks. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you for your positive comments. Thank you for your question. I can respond as we presented at the original hearing. Both companies maintain a reclamation bond with the city of Torrington. We presented at the very initial permit individually, reclamation plans which will need to be updated. once the final quarry floors are reached. As far as when the quarry is exhausted, that's a function of depth of material, and we are taking out material that is beneficial for use in our construction uses, beneficial for use here in the city of Torrington. So, uh, the, the end of, of life of mine is not determined at this point, but we do have plans, and we are obligated under the permit conditions to reclaim the land when it is completed, when, when the mining is completed. Sorry.
Five years and years of it.
If I told you, if I told you ten years today, and we went five more renewals, and I came back again, you'd say I lied. So I, I don't, I don't want to mislead you. Um, there, I, I will say, we are looking at least another ten years would be my guess.
Sorry, one more point.
Jim, I, I can't see your name from here, but you, I thought yours discussion when we first talked on was spot on. I think that's absolutely necessary, that we should demand from these companies to have that due diligence provided to you before you do make any approval. You should hold off the approval of this renewal until you have it in your hand and it's documented.
Uh, Richard Warren again, I, I would like to comment again about the life of mine. We are operating under, under market conditions. COVID changed construction, COVID is relatively done, and there's more monies flowing in, there's different activities going on. It, it, the, the market is going to impact not only the life of mine, but the activity of the mine. So I would point out, if we were to operate more quickly to complete mining, it would require more trucking. So there, there is a trade-off that we are trying to balance and, and be good neighbors as we make application, as we make efforts not to, not to overextend ourselves, not to overextend our, our community goodwill that we are trying to generate. So, um, I, I want to make that point, that, that timing has an impact on other activities within the mine.
Did you find a ma'am?
His name was Alex from C- His name was Alex from C T D E E P. And he writes, for the quarry operation permit, it looks like that permit process is done through the city of Torrington Land Use Planning Zoning. They should have any environmental studies submitted with their permit. And then he, he said, I'm going to also try to give Torrington a call either today or tomorrow to ask about it. And I guess he asked you about it.
Well, that doesn't say it's required, ma'am.
Okay, but-
No, it's-
Well, I mean, he's implying that it should be submitted.
Okay.
Okay, but my question is, why is not one required, and can it be required?
I personally don't read that as it should be required. It says if one is required, it would be required at the city level. That's not how I interpret your text.
I, I understand, but I'm asking you, why is one not required, and can it be required? It's important.
That's up to this commission sitting here. That's up to this commission sitting here. It is, I, I would point out again, it's not required in our regulations, but we're under a special exception, so there is leeway for our commission to make decisions.
Good evening, Amy Hill, ninety-eight Starkstil Road, Berville section of Torrington. Um, new information for us, I did a water test, I'm an ecology student at Northwestern. Um, I did a water test in our water, I sent it out, we don't have the results back yet. It did come up a little weird, um, so I sent it out to get more substantial testing done. I also did a soil test down in the corner of our pasture. Um, at the bottom of the wall that my father was talking about that needed to be fixed, um, from the blasting. Um, where I took the soil sample, Haynes brought us some truckload of dirt a few years ago to try to appease my dad for the damage. So I took the soil test from there, and we had to do, um, a semester-long, um, experiment on the soil. It was something to do in school. So we ran, we used my soil, um, and when we ran the test, we found that it was, it didn't grow an antibiotic, that was the whole point of the experiment. Um, but what it did do is come up toxic and ate through five self relative, uh, safe relative, um, organisms. It should have been kind of afraid of those and gone to the other side of the Petri dish, but it didn't do that, it actually ate them. So there's not, we don't have any more material to actually test that liquid anymore to see what it was that made it do this. But it was very interesting, and the professor thought it was pretty incredible that it had done this. Um, whether or not it can be attached to anything, I don't know, but it was definitely a, an interesting piece of the puzzle. Um, I'm thinking about having the soil sent out now to be tested, um, to see if there's any connection to it. More, more than likely, after doing some research, it would be a heavy metal testing. Um, and that would be what was wrong with the soil to begin with. Um, as far as everything else goes, uh, somebody did come to our house, I wasn't there to see me. They spoke to my dad for like five minutes. One thing they have been doing again, which I am super appreciative, is they leave one of the blasting guys at our house to be there to let us know when the blast is going to go off, um, so that I can have my son prepared and have headphones on him. So they have been doing that, and I'm very appreciative of that. Um, but as far as everything else, everything else is still pretty status quo. So, um, but the environmental studies, I'm going to ask you to please really consider doing an environmental study and an air quality study. Um, we're breathing the dust, and with the environmental stuff, there's all sorts of things that can go wrong. So it would be great, I don't want this to turn into an Aaron Brockovich situation, so, thank you.
Can you tell me when it was done?
Which one?
Well, you said you got soil.
The soil test?
No, not the test. When did you get the soil from Haynes?
Oh, when did we get it? The soil was delivered about two years ago, two and a half years ago.
My question is, where is the soil from? Obviously, we're talking about-
Quarry in Berville.
Soil from the quarry?
It's not soil now, it was dump truckloads of, of dirt. And it was put right where I got the sample from, because two and a half years later, it grew grass. So I-
Because my concern is, and I'm not questioning your, your comment, miss.
Yep.
They are a gravel and stone processing entity. When you're saying soil, I'm a little concerned.
They brought us dirt that had, uh, rock in it and stuff like that, it had debris in it. It was like, I don't know what you call it. It had dirt rocks, didn't have debris, but it had, you know, gravel that big in it. Couple dump truckloads, I don't know how many it was, three, four.
What I'm having with, I, I mean, if you have soil that's contaminated and there's some problem with it, you know, I'm not going to argue that. But, you know, I have to find the origin of the, of where it came from. I mean, if you, are you implying that it came out of the quarry?
No, like I said before, it's-
So how is it relative to the, to the quarry?
I'm not saying for sure it came from there. What I'm saying is I took the soil sample right from where they dumped the dirt.
Right.
That's what I'm telling you.
And I am asking, where did the dirt come from?
It came from the Berville Quarry from Haynes.
So what you're, you're saying that you know for a fact it came from the quarry?
Yes, they dumped the dirt there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I don't want to be confused with what you're asking me, but they dumped the dirt there. Two and a half years later, I needed a soil sample for school. I took it from that spot, not because they dumped dirt there. I actually didn't put two and two together until, until everything came back. And they had dumped the dirt there, I took the sample from there and did the project throughout school.
Okay.
So.
All right.
That's it.
Name for the record, please.
Sure.
Adam Peters, Haynes Materials, so I just do want to clarify. What Amy's talking about is, is processed material, uh, crushed rock that's turned into processed material. And so the timing of that had to be, uh, you know, two and a half, three, could have been even four years ago at this time. Uh, Bruce being a neighbor of ours, we provided him with some material for his driveway. Um, not in any sort of response to an issue, just more of trying to do the good neighborly thing. It is virgin material, it's the same material that would be underneath her house that's within close proximity. It's the same rock, it's the same mountain, it's the same. I don't believe that we have any information that it's actually contaminated by any means based on her study at Northwestern. It's not uncommon for there to be metallic material and rock. That's, that's a normal-
Just for the record, sir. Stone in processed material has to meet state and federal regulations for construction, uh, integrity and so forth. And obviously, this stuff has been tested in-
So on a very regular basis, on a very regular basis, the material coming out of that mountain is tested for contamination. It's tested for all sorts of different properties, because it's used in concrete, it's used in asphalt, it's used on Connecticut DOT work. It's shipped in all different areas that require-
It's kind of certified, so to speak, that it's safe to use.
Very much so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
More like a question, but it might be relevant.
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Nancy Siegelstein, four thirty-one Trails End Drive. Um, we, uh, you mentioned, um, that there's a certain depth that he can go to, that the company can go to. Is the depth going to be? I'm sorry, is the depth, um, going to be the floor? Or you're not sure where the floor is? I just want to know how deep you're going to go, and obviously you can't go below a certain point, because apparently that's something they tell you. I just wanted to know a little bit more about the depth of the digging or the blasting. If you could.
Richard Warren again for the applicant. Um, the, the, the plans show a depth of, sorry, the plans show a depth of mine that we are, that the permit has previously been given to, and we are not looking to go beyond that. If there were anything where we discovered, if we, if, if at the end of the, the, the permit plan depths, we chose to do borings and see if there was additional material available, that would be in a completely entirely new permit. It would require a new set of plans, a new application before this commission, and a new public hearing if it were to be allowed. So as of right now, the depth is as the depth is planned. There is no study that I'm aware of to go any further. Sorry, and I'm like, we're, we're at grade, we're, oh, maybe Ken can address that. Depth of mine? Muted.
You're muted, Ken. Thank you.
I can address that, I'm going to have to do a little bit of zooming in, because I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, and it, and it varies. Uh, as you're looking at the green parallel lines on the plan, that is, that, those represent, uh, fifty-foot elevation benches. So the depth varies, but the ultimate depth of the Haynes Quarry, um, I'm going to have to go to a second sheet for that. Would be elevation seven fifty in the quarrying area. Uh, and then it's sloped, so at the far, far edges of the quarry, on the Haynes Quarry, it's elevation seven fifty, then it slopes to seven forty-five and to seven forty, and then to seven thirty-five, uh, to provide, uh, adequate drainage of the quarry after they reach ultimate depth, so that water just doesn't sit in puddle, it will drain off, uh, slowly. That depth is not below the road grade, uh, so the, the lowest depth of the quarry is, is right near, uh,
Seven.
Which is seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five.
Goes up from that, and it is not lower than the road grades.
So the, the road, uh, I'm just repeating, Ken, for, uh, those who couldn't hear here in the, in the, uh, audience. The road depth is, uh, in front of the quarry is roughly, the road elevation is seven hundred and thirty-five feet above sea level. The quarry floor will be no lower than that, so we, we would grade to, 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 uh, road level, nothing, nothing below that. So there's no, there's no excavation, uh, below the floor.
No comments from the audience without coming forward, please.
What I'm asking, my name is Carol Pfeiffer, I live in Lakewood. What I'm asking is, if I'm on the road and I'm driving by, I come off the highway now, I see nothing but a big hole in the mountain that's been getting deeper and bigger and deeper, and it's very unattractive. I don't, and I look at it and I see all this dust and all this stuff flying around. We're living in Lakewood, okay? We have a community there of four hundred and seventy-four doors, which means a lot of people. Now, when I come down the hill and I go to the left, am I going to see another deep hole the same way? That I see when I come off the highway?
He answered the question, I don't, maybe you didn't-
But I don't understand, he didn't answer it in a way that was understandable.
Uh, basically, what he was trying to say to you is the Winstead Road level, the quarry will not be below that level.
But how deep in?
Well, that, that's a different question, we've already indicated how much of it on that map.
How, could you tell me what that, what it is? I can't read that map, I'm not a geologist.
No, yeah, how far back does it go?
That the quarry is?
Uh, it, that's, that's a hard question, no answer here, because it's, it's hundreds of feet from the road, and and without having a scale, it would take some doing, it's, it's not an answer that I have off the top of my head.
Can you give me a guesstimate? It's going to be twenty feet in, fifty feet in, a hundred feet in?
I'm-
I know it's not going to go below the, the street level, but how deep in is it going to be?
It's going to continue in for hundreds of feet, as it already has, and then it will start climbing once you get to the green lines that are shown on the map here.
So what you're essentially saying is, I'm going to get off the highway, I'm going to see one big hole over here. Then I'm going to go a little bit distance before I get to the road that goes up to Lakewood, and then I'm going to see another big hole. So we're going to be in between these two dugout areas. Would you like to live there?
You are not in-
Like to live there and have a home there? We're paying a lot of money in taxes to live here, and now this is what we're looking at. And this is what we don't want to have to look at. And that's basically why we're here, plus all the environmental issues of the dust and all the other stuff that goes in the air that we're breathing, and the noise and the tremors and all of that. That's what we would like addressed, in a nutshell.
I, I do just want to respond that this is a life of mine, again, over time, the permit has been in existence. The permit was allowed with the elevations and cut lines that are already existing two years ago, plus the, the excavation lines at the, the top of the mountain. If there are conditions, as we've, we've asked for a waiver of, uh, the open quarry, uh, space, which was not in existence, that, that five acre limit, uh, at the origin, at the origination of, uh, when we first began mining permits. As we move into the site, if reclamation is required at Winstead Road, if that is a, a potential option and opportunity, so that the neighbors are not just looking at blank, open hole, that's something that we can discuss, that we could consider as a condition that, um, we certainly, as, as we've moved the buffer away from, from, uh, Burr Mountain Road, we can, depending on the operation locations of, of the quarry itself, we can move further off of Winstead Road as we excavate the, the valid material.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Tworkin, I live at four sixty Evergreen Road in Torrington. Let me understand something. The lady who spoke before about the soil samples raised issues about the possibility of health hazards. I'm stunned that it's just that there aren't regulations. We live in a scientific world. Why not get soil samples or rock samples or whatever? Make split samples, send them to OSHA, send them to another organization, and get the facts, not just what we think. It is unconscionable to have us partly living in a place where it might be not be safe. We don't know what the table is, the water table, uh, and we don't know what the- We don't know what the table is, the water table, and we don't know what the air quality is. They have not been studied. I suggest, respectively, you have scientific information before you approve this plan.
Thank you.
Hold on, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
You asked of Adam, and I, I would like to reiterate that again, we are routinely randomly tested as far as dust and noise violations. As far as sampling of the material, we are required, when it is in use, we manufacture concrete and asphalt. We are required under DOT regulations to maintain certain standards, certain requirements of the rock, of the, the quarried materials. Those could be made available. I don't have them because it's not a requirement of the, of the permit. That's why we did not pursue it. But there is testing that is done, and this is, this is this is inert material, this is rock that is in the ground. We are pulling it out, we are making, manufacturing useful material here that is going into structures such as City Hall. I, I do not believe that we are, that we are opening up in the quarry a, a contamination issue. I, I'm not, I'm not qualified to say that, so I, I apologize. But, but there is testing of the raw materials that is done.
And it's typically third-party. That's not your company, and it's not Haynes Company doing it. It's a testing company that's involved with the state DOT or XYZ entity, correct, sir?
Yes.
May I speak?
Excuse me?
May I speak?
Go ahead, Mr. Haynes.
So Patrick Haynes' materials. So just to reiterate what Richard said and clarify, the material is regularly tested and, and depending on use, can be tested for various chemical or environmental reasons. And to Richard's point, this, this rock is, is virgin rock material. It is as God made it. There are no, there was no, there, there are no contaminants in it. And if, and if there were, we certainly would have known about them, and we'd have economic issues of, of using the material and selling the material. And there, there are, it's the same geological source that runs up and down Winston Road that I, I understand there are other quarries along that road, and, and to my knowledge, there are no, there is no fact-based evidence of, of contaminants on, on our property, on G's property. It's, it's frankly, not even been, we've, it's been tested so many times over so many years that it, it's not even something that we would give one second thought to as to whether there was any contaminants or anything of that sort.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Arthur Bambel, four two seven Trails End Drive in Torrington. I realize over, things change over time, and there was no environmental impact statement necessary. But I think it's unconscionable that it's not being required now. My other question, though, is, is there a geological survey that shows any natural faults and the proximity of those faults to the Lakewood community or any other private homes in the area? Because that's a consideration to be looked at for the future as well.
Look at something new, ma'am.
Carol said about.
Name again, please, I'm sorry.
Nancy Segelstein.
Thank you, miss.
And the answer that was given was, if you want us to rebuild the mountain or whatever you call it, you know, make it look nice again, we'll think about it, you know, we'll do that at the time. I, I mean, who wouldn't want their mountain back? We live in a mountainous community for a reason. We like it. So of course, we don't want flat, nothing, or Costco's. We want our, you know, the trees back. So I would plan ahead. That's all I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
Richard Warren, my apologies if I misspoke. I did not mean that it was an if statement. There is reclamation plan, and what I said is, if we need to start it sooner, rather than waiting till we have accomplished more excavation, we can begin a planting process if that is a requirement.
That being said, Mr. Warren, more of a buffer.
Yes.
Also Winston Road.
Uh, yes, yes, that was, yes, that was my thought.
You have something new, sir?
Mark Dwarken, four sixty Evergreen. There is a reclamation project. Is there a bond that these companies have to have, and does it cover enough so that we could take our company, uh, community back?
I don't know what that means, sir.
We don't know how much you, you're implying, is it enough? We, we don't know what enough is for you. We have a bond, and we think it's adequate.
May I ask how much the bond is?
But there are two bonds in place. There is roughly three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of bonding in place for reclamation purposes. And I, again, I was just asked to clarify about buffering. If we are to plant, if we are to require, we, we need to make sure that we are still allowed sufficient land for operations. So that is, I, I, I don't want to just offer up blanket buffering if it negatively impacts how we have truck traffic flow inside the site, how we have potential queuing inside the site. So I, I, I don't want to blanket offer something without thinking it through.
Mark Dwarken, four sixty Evergreen, three hundred some odd thousand dollars. How do we know that's enough? What studies have been done to say how much it will cost when they're done to make the place look livable again? I don't hear that. I hear a story about three hundred and about eighty-three thousand. But that's a number that I just don't understand. How about making it so onerous that if they don't fulfill their obligation, they lose millions of dollars?
We're not allowed to do that by law, just so you know that. We can only, we can only cover the cost of restoring the property. That's all, that's all we can ask for. We can't ask for more under the law.
What if it costs six hundred thousand dollars to restore the property, and they have a three hundred thousand dollar bond?
What I can say is, they submitted an estimate for restoration of the property. Our engineering department reviewed that estimate and agreed with the estimate to restore, to restore the property.
All due respect, I, I appreciate that. I would rather have independent sources come in, take a look, and give their estimates.
Susan Matts, three hundred Cliffside. This amount that you agreed upon for the restoration, is there any escalation for, for inflation? Or, I mean, it was an amount, what year was that amount agreed to?
This year. It's the, it's, you have to understand, it's the cost of restoring the property. It's basically to regrade and plant, and, and plant vegetation.
Yeah, I understand that. But if you agreed upon an amount twenty years ago, that amount would be grossly insufficient in today's market.
No, the, the, the estimate moves each time, each two years that we approve the application. With, with whatever the cost is at that time.
Ron Berger, one seventy-nine Ledge Drive. I'd like to point out that radon is a natural gas. It's toxic, and it's found in virgin rock. Number two, this screen here would make a great paper handout. There is no north arrow on it, as I see it here.
They're on the table over there as well.
Oh, thank you.
Some of it's cut off from the screen, sir. There's a ton of.
But it would be nice if someone would have walked us through that screen. Thank you.
See, there you go.
Arthur Bambel, four two seven Trails End. I've recently moved to Torrington from Long Island. We had three of the most dangerous toxic landfills near us. Not to talk about the landfills, but the restoration of those properties, they were capped the bush, they were covered with clay and sand and dirt and grass. They are eyesores. So I think in a restoration project, there has to be a little more specifics than just, we'll restore it with plant life and dirt. I think there has to be a little more of an intense plan as to what Torrington, with the community, with the environment. We moved here because we were proud of this area. We, we love the area, and that could be an eyesore. And I'd hate to see something like that as a restoration, just be a quick dump of clay, dirt, grass, and the end of it, and you wind up with a lump, a brown lump in the middle of the earth. So I think there has to be a better plan as to what kind of restoration would be forthcoming.
If I can respond, Richard Warren, it's my understanding that the reclamation plan, which is submitted as a part of the application, is what we are looking to be obligated to. If, at the time, if we, if we remove more materials, if we want to revise that reclamation plan, we are obligated to come back to you and get your approval for it. So there is, there's nothing that we can do without this commission's approval as far as restoring the property, and, and we have submitted plans to do so. We are willing to reconsider them at such time as we are ready for reclamation.
Carol Pfeiffer, Lakewood. This is all very vague, vague. We'll make the changes as we go along. If we dig a little bit more, if we see fit. Three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in today's market is what they're proposing for reclamation is nothing. And they're talking about digging for another ten years or more. What is it going, what is it going to cost? How much more is it going to cost then? We won't even be here. We'll all be dead. Think about it. You're talking about three hundred and certain amount of, of dollars for reclamation. It, it, it's meaningless. You can't even buy a house for that. And they're talking about that for restoration. They don't have it real interesting. I think if you really want to show us that you're working with us as well, we want to see what the testing is on all these stones that they've been kicking around, and they say that they have every, all testing at certain times of the year, that information should be sent to Lakewood. Whatever your reclamation, we should get all that information. Everything here that this gentleman, and I can understand why he's doing it. He's a lawyer. He has to. He's representing his company. It's too vague, it's too non-committal. We need more facts, and we need it in paint, we need it in writing, not in just talking. You know, Lakewood is a big community. It's a strong part of this town. We would hope that the town will support us in this. We have very, very legitimate concerns. We're not getting the answers.
Adam. I do just want to, miss, just want to point out that it's, it's quite the opposite of vague. It's extremely specific. It's, it's engineered, it's documented, it's public information. It's, it's all accessible by you. Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's public information. It's not something anybody's, it is, it's very.
So, so these, these plans have been posted on our website and available for the last two months. The, the plan, the plans, you're, you're saying that the plans are vague. There's a, there's a set of plans here, there's.
Name and address for the record.
So let, let me just ask a question. Can you, can you just address the agencies that review your, your testing when it goes out? I, I think that's, might be where we're missing this.
So that the, the majority of the testing is done by Connecticut DOT, and so there's always a concern when material is extracted from one site and brought to another, that a contaminated soil would be used. They do intricacy of testing to make sure that that's not happening.
And, and if you were, and if there was an issue with your tests at the DOT level, they would stop your operations. You wouldn't even get to this point where you're applying.
This project would not be economically viable if there was an issue like that. Eighty percent of the material used here goes into DOT projects.
Do you get copies of those test data? Do you get the tests?
That's not my information.
It's a third-party, Greg.
No, I know that. Somebody has to hold that.
Well, I'm sure it's a DOT or.
Know is somebody, and what I'm saying is, somebody has to have those.
The state of Connecticut would.
I think what I was, what I'm trying to drill down to is, we have, you know, for the, for the audience, we have a lane that we, that we have to stay in as a, as a planning and zoning commission. And, and there's a lane other agencies have. If there was an issue with, with what comes out of the site, it would already be an issue, and it would never, it wouldn't be in front of us per, per application at the local level.
That's correct.
Well, that being said, Jeremy, just to kind of clarify, it's air quality and everything else that's been monitored and tested, correct?
We're monitored by MSHA, which is Mining Safety Health Administration. They're, they're federally funded. They supersede OSHA on a, on a site like ours. We're monitored by DEP. We're monitored by the, you know, by the town. You guys have a responsibility if there's an issue or a complaint that we're told about. So I mean, we are looked at and, and monitored by multiple, a multitude of organizations. It's what I just did. So DEP, MSHA, OSHA, the, the city of Torrington.
You, so, so we don't have the authority to do that as a planning and zoning commission or as a town. You have to, you have to contact those agencies to get, to get that information.
You're, we have those. We do not have that information. These gentlemen have that.
And I believe I just.
The point I'm trying to make is, all of the, all of the agent, different agencies have their own regulations. We, we have just a set of regulations we have to follow at the local level. We don't require anything that's out of our purview at the local level. If, if, if there's a different agency that regulates what comes out of their mind, out of their mind, that's not, that's not our purview. If, if there was an issue with it, we would hear about it, and, and the, the project wouldn't be going forward. That's the point I'm, I am trying to make.
Going forward all these years.
The, the job of this commission is just to take testimony based on our local regulations.
I just want to interrupt a minute. I, I believe Mr. Haynes was interjecting earlier. We didn't get to him.
Uh, thank you. Adam, my brother said what I needed to say.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you. Yes.
Amy Hill, ninety-eight Starksville Road, Torrington. I have a question. So you're just going through all that list. I have a question. You're going through that list of all those agencies that do all that stuff for you and do all those environmental testings. Where are the results? And where, if you must have them, they must tell you that you passed or failed?
Sorry. So, I mean, there, that information is held by them.
So they don't tell you if you passed or failed?
Well, we know if we, we know if we've passed or failed, and we know that we have not failed.
Okay, so they don't, like, give you a copy of this?
Again, we're, it's, it's a little bit.
You're being very vague.
There's, there's no, there's no being this here. I'm trying, I, I want to interrupt you, but, but you have to contact those agencies to get that information.
And do you think if I contact those agencies and say I want your environmental studies?
It's, it's public record, just like, just like anything else.
Public record. You have a right to know.
Well, they're, they're, they're not going to give you an environmental study because there is no environmental study required.
The testing.
And I understand everybody wants an environmental study. Maybe going forward, it's not going to happen yesterday. It's not going to happen tomorrow.
No, we know it's not going to happen yesterday or tomorrow. I'm not saying anything about them not having it done. I just want to know, you know, it seems weird to me that they wouldn't have a copy of their test results, but if I can get those test results by contacting those agencies, and it's public knowledge, I'll do that. If it's not an environmental study, then I want one of those done.
Patrick Haynes' materials. So just to be clear, the, the Connecticut DOT does have as public information on their materials site approved sources for use in DOT ready mix and asphalt. So you can, you can do the research to look on there and understand what. um, what evaluations the material needs to go through to be used there. That is on their DOT public website, and that might give a lot of information. I, I, there, there is nobody being intentionally vague. The idea of testing itself is a very vague and broad s- statement. I don't know that we can say we've had a test done for every concern that you might have. And I, my, my guess would be there's more testing that has been done that even we don't know about because it isn't, um, required by a customer if they're using it at the Torrington High School, for example, where, which is built substantially on the material coming from this quarry. If they get the results that are acceptable, then generally we don't hear about it. And so, so we're not being vague when we tell you, if there were any environmental concerns with this piece of property, I think that the same concerns would be held by any neighbors because the rock is the exact same rock that you live on. But also if there were concerns, if there were pa- something not passing, something contaminated, we simply wouldn't be able to be for this commission with this presentation because it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a project that, that, that makes sense.
Okay, I'm not talking about the rock at this point. I'm talking about an environmental study that will go further than that. I'm talking about air quality, of course, and I know you've mentioned something about that. But how about the dust that blows over everybody's houses and, um, impacts people's windows and their cars and everything else and the dust that we're breathing? And I'm also talking about environmentally, um, what it's doing to, to the nature that you have, that you're ripping apart their houses, which I didn't want to go there, but I'm going to. You're tearing down a mountain, which is changing the trajectory of all those animals as far as, um, the paths that they have to move. So where else environmental as a whole, not just as the rock and what's in the rock or, um, just a water study or just this kind of study, but as a whole, as a whole picture. That's what we want.
So again, Adam Peters, I, I guess in response, we are not the only operation in Connecticut, in the country and the world that, that, that does this, right?
In our neighborhood.
Understood, understood. And, and, and in every neighborhood around every quarry, I'm sure there's some, some general, uh, feelings of, of the same. If, if governing bodies felt as though there was an environmental issue, they would require an environmental impact study. They do not require an environmental impact study.
Yes, yes.
It is not required, right?
We're hoping to change that.
Understood, but it is currently not a requirement.
No. All right. Sig five four, four forty-one Evergreen. I got a question for Richard and I guess the committee. OSHA, have they ever visited the site? Uh, I know that nothing supersedes the federal agency OSHA. So is, or yes or no, have they visited the site? Okay.
So, uh, that's actually an incorrect statement. So on a mine site, which this is, MSHA supersedes OSHA. So OSHA. MSHA, which is Mining, Safety and Health Administration.
Federal agency.
Federal agency. So OSHA, uh, governs certain things. MSHA focuses only on mine, one hundred, one hundred percent on mining. So on a site like this, OSHA is not the top tier. MSHA is the top tier.
I think MSHA visited the site.
They come to our site one to two times a year at random. Um, we get no, no, um, advance notice. They could show up on a Tuesday at one o'clock and they say, hey, we're here to do an inspection.
But there was a safety violation on the site and MSHA would be there and not OSHA.
That's correct.
Man, a fellow machine got run over. OSHA's involved, probably in conjunction with MSHA.
Does it?
Or they supersede everything.
Nancy Segelstein. Um, I just whispered and found out that Burr Mountain is on the left-hand side of that map. Is that correct? What about, actually Lakewood is on the left of that Burr Mountain, right? Am I right? Or is it above it? I'm a little confused about where this, because this quarry before you get to Lakewood and then this quarry as you go to Winstead. So I'm a little confused about the map. Can you help me figure out where we are? Like you are here, like I want to see, you are here. Check mark.
It's, it's off, off that plan, way off that plan. Oh, Ken's not there.
Because I, I see the quarry every day when I'm driving on Winston. I see it, so I know it's there.
So Adam Peters, hands materials. I think to clarify some of the confusion, when you're on Winstead Road, we do not, this, this application does not, uh, uh, encase all of the different operations that you see. We have ours, which is thirty-two seventeen Winstead Road. As you travel a little further down Winstead Road, I don't know who's doing that work, that tree clearing and the commission would, would, would know that, driving south. As you continue further, that's another company. As you go north of us, that's another. They have all their own operation. They have their own permits. They have their own. That's why I think you, uh, miss, you might've said you're going to have a hole on either side of you. Uh, this is one continuous mine that we're working in. Anything outside of that is a different, different company, different operation. That's your, your. I don't, I, I don't, it's not my place to speak on their behalf.
Everybody watch me.
Pay attention.
About three thousand feet up here away from, away from the closest point of the mine, way up off.
And Winstead is where?
This is. Winstead, way up.
No, I mean the road.
Oh, great. This is, this is, this is Winstead Road. This is Burr Mountain Road. It's all Burr Mountain all the way up and it's up here.
Blue is existing, it green, it green outmine. And, but that's over here. That's, they're, they're not, they're not, they're not proposing to move out of the blue for this application.
How much land do you actually own? Susan Matts.
This will all be recorded, ma'am, for public record.
How much land do you actually own there that we will ultimately be looking for permits for? How many hundreds of acres or? Oh, and then just one other question as long as I'm standing here. So you guys are saying that there is no agency that would require an environmental impact study? So that nobody's concerned about what it's doing to the birds and the bears and the, and the water quality and Burr Mountain State Park. Nobody cares. There's no agency monitoring that.
If there was a requirement, we'd be doing it.
Uh, Richard Warren, letting you know that the, the total map area is roughly two hundred and forty-eight acres between the, between the ownership of both companies.
But that's not all mining.
No, that's.
So how much of it's mine?
The mining operation, uh, it's on the map. It's roughly thirty-six and. Sorry. Okay.
I have twenty-three point four acres on ONG and nineteen point eight acres on Haynes. That's not including the processing areas.
Right.
That's just the, the miners.
So I have two hundred and eighty-six fifty acres.
And out of two hundred and eighty-six acres is buffer zones around the entire property.
Correct, correct. And as I, I do recall it in, uh, one of my responses, w- we are, uh, operating in roughly twenty percent of the ONG parcel and fifteen percent of the, uh, Haynes parcel a- as far as the total acreage.
And Lakewood being three thousand feet, you're almost, you're more than a half mile away.
Correct.
And again, Patrick Haynes, I, I do think there's maybe some confusion on the Burr Mountain side and where Lakewood, Lakewood is relative to our, our project here. There is significant buffer between any mining activities and Burr Mountain Road uh, that I believe is, is heavily wooded and ultimately at a much higher elevation than anything that is happening in the quarry, um, the, the quarry areas. So, uh, I, I'm not a hundred percent clear on the concern of multiple, s- seeing multiple holes, but I don't believe that that is relative to our application. That you, you won't see it from Burr Mountain Road.
Last time, sir.
Mark Torkin, four sixty Evergreen. I want to go back to the science. You've heard double blind. You have agencies looking at what's going on. This doesn't make it for me. What about you have split samples sent down out of state where you don't know and I don't know what the soil samples, rock samples, radon, heavy metals, et cetera. That's the scientific way to do it. And if you don't do it like that, I don't think you do any due diligence.
Uh, Adam Peters, Haynes Materials. I, I think the only response to that is that there's, uh, requirements and regulations that we're required to live by and we are living by them. We're completely in compliance. We can't do more than, than that. That would be something to talk to outside of this room.
All right, Sig Pfeifer, I think we're getting to the point, it's up to your decision, obviously, that we're probably coming to a conclusion. So my question to you, Jeremy, what was the intent tonight? Are you planning on making a decision tonight? So, so that's up to the commission. It's not up to me. Okay. If they're comfortable closing the hearing or. The only thing I reiterate is what, and I thought was the strongest part of this meeting is with you, Jim. When you asked them for due diligence and you were disappointed that they didn't have it with them, that Richard didn't present that with you. And the due diligence could turn out perfect. There could be nothing wrong with be very satisfied with it. But I'm asking this committee to please not make a decision until you receive that due diligence.
Can I, this is Patrick Haynes, hands of chairs. Can I just ask for clarification on the, what exactly that gentleman is expecting or believes?
Um, I believe, I believe we were referring to the queuing of the trucks when we, when we asked about the due diligence. Just the, the morning queuing of the trucks and, and how we're going to resolve that.
Giving him off or whatever.
Uh, and, and I will reiterate that we're, we're certainly committed to working with the city to solve that issue. If in fact it is an issue, which again, it has not been an issue for, for many, many years and nothing in the business operation is, is changing.
Okay, uh, let me just throw this out there. Um, this is extremely simple for, um, ONG and Haynes to do. It literally will take them probably an hour. Okay, this is ridiculous. Um, I'm really, uh, really dissatisfied with, with your presentation on that part. You got all the data, the complaints, all of that stuff, and you just dropped the ball. Okay, that's my personal opinion. Um, what needs to happen here is a preliminary plan showing what your queue is going to be along the highway. Should it be two trucks, six trucks, ten trucks? Doesn't matter. What is the queue that you're going to provide? Once you provide that queue and that queue is met to the maximum, your gate opens up that morning. I don't care if a guy has to be there at six in the morning, pay a little extra. It doesn't, you know, people need jobs. Well, it is hard to have, you know, because I'm sure a guy doesn't work or start working at seven o'clock when the gate opens, correct? He's probably there earlier, right? Well, have a guy out there, gee, there's eight trucks, let's open up the gate, let's start loading. If it's six-thirty, it's six-thirty, you know, whatever. But you know, figure it out. It's not that difficult.
But you're, you're, you're providing some options and that's why we said we would discuss with the city because.
But you need to show how much queue you can provide.
Well, I'm going to interject something because there was one complaint about.
Sorry, Greg, you just moved towards the form, so. It's not going to.
Okay. The complaint was, it wasn't broad-based complaint. It was a, it was a, it was a complaint, which should be, you know, looked at and thought about and decided upon, but it wasn't qualified. And in order to act, you have to have some, people like to talk about data. Well, you have to have some data. Because in order to develop a queuing, you have to understand it. We've done this a million times with site plans where you need queuing. I mean, you all understand when you go get a coffee, there's a line of cars, that's queued cars. Those are cars standing in line, waiting to get serviced. But you have to understand what the low is. In other words, what do you think your car count's going to be? I have a complaint. That much I know. It's not defined. It's just a complaint. We have to define it. I can ask them to do something about it, but they have to understand what the heck is the problem? They're saying they're not aware of it. So there's some confusion between what someone else thought versus what they're interpreting as what they say. So I just don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. I mean, we'll address it. It should, it should be addressed now. No, no pun intended. But, but I don't want to, I also don't want to, I, I want to do this in a smart way, you know, because otherwise what we're doing is just barking at each other. And that's not going to be helpful here. We have to get down the road of, of legitimately defining what was seen. Okay, let's, maybe, maybe there's a requirement for monitoring for a while to find out. What, what, what kind of problem do we have here? You know, because then you can define how I'll, I'll address it. You can go off and create a, a queue up for the trucks that's, you know, ten trucks. Is that, is that smart? I don't know, because I don't know if that's your problem. I, I, I don't, I just want to, I want to address it, but I want to do it intelligently. That's the only thing.
That's exactly why we wanted to discuss it with city, with staff, uh, thinking that that would be sufficient, that we will come up with a plan that is workable for the actual situation.
I want it addressed. And so all I can say is that I'm not ignoring the complaint. I want it addressed, but it has to be done intellectually. It can't be just, oh, we'll just throw something up. I don't know, maybe that'll work.
Because I threw it out earlier myself. You know, the, the operation starts at seven AM. If that gate is open at six-thirty and those trucks are brought off the road onto the site, no shovel starts until seven o'clock, I would not have a problem with that. I don't know if anybody else would.
No, but that may not be, that may not solve the problem, but it's a step in the right direction.
Look, it's trucks off the road.
It starts the process of saying, look, we have a way to try to mitigate some of that potential queuing up of trucks on the street or on, on, on the actual road.
But they, they do have property that they could possibly, I don't know, do whatever and have the trucks go off the road.
Yeah, we're in, we're in the weeds. We're in the weeds. We don't need to be in the weeds. This is a solvable problem by intellectual people who are smart enough to figure it out. But it's a question of looking at the site plan, working with the, with the, the town planners and the town, the town departments for trying to resolve it, whether it involves police traffic, it was other people. Put the right people in the room, sit down, identify the problem, come up with a solution. Come on, it's not that hard. I don't want to go off a beaten path and start coming up with grand plans when I don't even know what I have for a problem.
To me, the, the one component that I keep hearing.
Sir, what you're saying makes absolute sense.
Sit back down for a minute, ma'am.
Just.
Please respect.
The chair is there, so.
Okay. We have a couple of issues here at hand that I keep hearing over and over. Again, the queuing, I believe, is, is very minimalistic, so to speak, in this presentation.
It was brought up and I respect, Jim, your, your input and everybody else's input on it. The other major component that people keep bringing up is environmental testing. You know what? These quarries are not going away anywhere in the state, in the country. Okay? To be good neighbors all around, everybody needs to work together. Okay? Is it possible, Mr. Warren and associates, that moving forward, some type of environmental testing. Testing component can be implemented. That'll satisfy our neighbors. And again, a definitive component that says. Are we listening? Air quality. Components of the. You know, and again, I'm going to reiterate that the comment earlier, as far as testing the product. To me, that's a mutation. This product has been tested over and over and over again, you're saying, no, sir, I apologize, you know what, I beg to differ. I've been in construction for forty years and I've been through many components of outside testing agencies, testing components and so forth. These guys wouldn't still be in business if their product was inferior, along with all the other. Quarries and so forth across the state and across the countries. You know, we could sit here all night long and you know what, frankly, I'm not going to do that. Okay, we need to get some resolve here, we're not going to keep spinning our wheels, so. Can you do something with the environmental, because obviously that's a component? And obviously, when it comes up clean, we're not going to be having this conversation next time. Okay? We have some queuing component. Okay?
But my thoughts are, if if one's got to do an environmental study, they all need to do an environmental study.
But we're not going to change.
Mine is mine is mine. And they all adhere to the same regulations, the same agencies. Then everybody has to do it, and I don't think that that's going to happen.
And the environmental testing, you know, maybe it's on Lake Ridge or the the neighborhood. That they foot the bill, if they're so concerned about an issue that may be a hand. That may be the direction.
What?
So so, uh, I mean, maybe it's not, it's it's not about requiring every quarry to do an environmental study when we have no, we basically have no authority to do so.
Right.
Maybe it's just getting copies of all of all the other studies that are done for our files. We we don't. I mean, that's, that really is up to all those other. Agencies, but I wouldn't mind gathering, you know.
Expertise.
I I can't speak to anybody's level of confidence when you have this data. But if if you have sources of data and it's independent data, meaning it doesn't come out of our building here, we're not doing it. It's coming out of another building, the state or whatever, if it's federal or state, it doesn't matter. The fact of the matter is, is if it's available and you can accumulate it. And it's it's got to be as dependable as it can be, because it's not your data, it's somebody else, it's an independent.
Right.
Study because you didn't do it. So you can be skeptical of it if you'd like, but that's a personal thing. Read the data. Make decisions based on what you're reading. I think that if you want to challenge it, yeah, it's on you, you want to challenge it? Go do it, challenge it.
Uh, Adam Peters, he's materials again, so just to respond to that, again, I want to reiterate that any of all of that testing. Is public information.
Yeah.
And we're happy to comply in any way we can to make sure that that's reachable, but it's really not our information to own.
No.
If it if it was, it would, to your point, it would not be third party. So I do, uh, with all due respect, disagree with that, I think the town is third party to us. And that there's there's meaning. That's meaningful, and I would ask on the queuing and things, is there any documentation of? Complaints other than the one gentleman that stood up in the previous? That says that we have a truck queuing problem on Winstead Road.
I haven't been notified by any other. Put the queuing aside, please. I mean, we don't want to talk about queuing anymore, this is.
I'm with you, I know what I'm saying.
I mean, we have a complaint. We need to analyze the complaint, we need to identify the problem, and then you need to come to a solution as to how to solve it. That's done, otherwise we're going to go back into the weeds and we're never going to get out of this thing. You know, that's a done deal, just go do it, work with the with the internal groups that you have to put together to be able to make a sensible. End result out of it. As far as the, before I ask somebody to go out and do an environmental impact study. I want to see what has already been done. I've got to make an assessment before I go ask somebody to do something. I just, I'm not going to do it, if there's data out there that I can accumulate and somehow. Have somebody take a look at that and make some sense out of it so that it can be thought about. And I sort of what maybe measured in terms of how how valuable is it for us? Then I I don't want to ask somebody to go out and spend money on something I don't even know what we're doing. Oh, we're going to, we're going to worry about the animals and we got to worry about the water, we're going to. Can we start with a baseline? There's data out there, get the data together, that's the base, now, is it enough? It's not enough. Expand, we go further.
Yeah, all right. One more time, sir.
All I wanted to know is, is there a date Carol Pfeiffer? Is there a date that we would expect to get? A lot of this information together?
That's up to the.
Is that something that you could let us know? So that we can also prepare on our end. Okay, but you'll let us know.
If you're going to do that, you should have a single individual who's going to communicate to your group, I mean.
I mean, everything you've all said makes a lot of sense. And I think we just need more information. So just like to ask when we can all meet again so we could share information.
Today we can tell you that, but.
Okay, you'll let us know. Okay.
Well, you, again, I go back to what I said before, we need a single individual we can talk to, because we're not going to call everybody. All right? I head up an association, you know, so I'm familiar with, I'm I'm the per point of, point of contact.
Where's hockey tonight?
So we need a point of contact.
I hear. Peter.
Well, we have a person, I know.
One more time, sir, and then.
And then we're going to go to the. The applicant.
Arthur Bammel, four two seven Trails End, uh, the discussion of the testing has been fine, but I think we got off one of the topics, which I think is even more important than that. And that is that there was no true plan for the future. And I think that that. Plan was where we were, they were kind of, well, we'll do this, maybe we'll do that, if this happens, we'll take care of that, I think there has to be a specific plan. And I think that's where the focus is, because testing is testing and if it's not required, it's not required. But we need to know what the future is. And we need to know what, how the future affects us.
Let's go to Zoom for a minute, anyone on Zoom want to speak up?
I agree with Greg. Tom Tom. Everything he said.
Thank you.
This is, this is dying about the queue, and I do think that's an important component, I just think that it's going to be very. Because I I go that direction quite a bit and there's, and like they had said, it depends on the demand for the work, so how? You know, how accurate is that going to be, I guess, is my question, because obviously, different months of the year, you're more active than not, so. That's just my thought, I think it's a good thing to do, I just don't know how we can use it one hundred percent.
They did have, um, Carol, um, Dan, they did have, uh, traffic studies. Not office traffic study, formal traffic study, but they did talk about truck towns. So, you know, they have some idea kind of the traffic that's going in and out of the site. Again, we're getting into the weeds, I don't really want to do that, I think we're, we can get things solved. And there can be a solution to that issue, I just don't think that's a tall. A tall problem, it's one that's easily solved, to Jim's point, it's easily solved.
It is.
So, but but you have to identify it, you have to identify it first. Right.
Ma'am.
Barbara Douglas, two seventy seven, Cliffside up in Lake Ridge, and I want to just say thank you. For giving us your time, for trying to find a balance between. Business, which is trying hard to, you know, do what they have to do and. And we're trying to have, you know, live peacefully with what we're trying to do, and it's not easy. And there are multiple issues. And, um, we're working hard at it, and I do appreciate it, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Along those lines, this operation has been in. Ongoing for quite so many years. With. My experience and my knowledge here, really no issues. So that being said.
Adam Peters, Haynes materials again, so, you know, sort of in in. Closing for us, I I think. Want to say thank you to you guys, want to say thank you to everybody that came out. We're here to do the right thing, we're not, we're not here to hold a cloth over anybody's head, we're not here to hide information, we're not here to. Do something that's that's unethical or or incorrect, that's not who we are as a, as a company, that's. Not who our experience, what our experience with ONG has been. And, um. I think we've shown that we're 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 working and we're we're living within the requirements. Um, and in some cases above and beyond that, so appreciate your guys' time and reconsideration.
Thank you. Peter. Last time, ma'am, then we're going to turn the herbs. Please.
He's deferring to me.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
That's very kind of him.
Okay, Susan Matt's three hundred Cliffside Drive, yeah, we're not here to put Haynes out of business or ONG out of business. We're here to get information that you may not have, because nobody has done an environmental impact study. We may be doing damage to the environment. That we're totally unaware of, and the possibility is very, very strong that we may be doing that. And maybe by just changing slightly some of the things that they're doing, they could avoid that damage, that's all we're asking for.
Well, I'm sure their door is open, ma'am. Mr. Warren had. Mentioned he's.
That was about what I wanted to say is that we, as as Adam has said, I, thank you to all the comments that have come forward, thank you for your time, commission. Um, I wrote a a response explaining that this was the first that we had heard many of the issues and complaints. We are, we are willing to work with anybody in the neighborhood because we intend to be good neighbors and stay here. So I I will give you my card, I will give anybody here my card. In in summary, I I would, I would like to ask that we close the hearing if there is more information requested. My proposal right now, tonight, um, is that we place a sign immediately, as soon as we can print it. That no truck queuing before seven AM so that there, so that we. Eliminate traffic until we open the gate, and then we will address how many trucks we think we need, um, so that's, that's. My suggestion, my offer, that's my immediate response about something concrete to address it immediately. Um, that being said, the information that was provided in the application in public hearing. Is what we believed was sufficient to to allow the commission to make a decision. I respect all of the comments that have been expressed, I'm willing to continue to hear them and hope that we can act. Uh, favorably to to satisfy everybody's concerns that have been raised. But I would, I would ask the commission, close the hearing and and. Allow us to move forward. So I just want to explain that what we were talking about was just our time, our timeframes for our. You know, just clarifications on our timeframes for our, for reviewing the application.
Uh, good evening, my name is Peter Herbst, and I'm here this evening representing Haynes. Uh, I've represented Haynes probably on. Maybe eight or ten different applications coming here on a biannual basis. And I've always been impressed with the thoroughness of the way they do their operation. Uh, it's been a real privilege to work for them, I have also represented ONG on other projects. And when I'm representing ONG, I'm dealing with professionals as well. Uh, the concerns of the neighbors are listened to, they're responded to. And, uh, as you have in past years, I would ask you to approve this application. Uh, these companies are working together, the work that they do is extremely important. And as you can see, they are regulated not just by your commission, but by state and federal agencies as well. Uh, and there've never been any violations, um, and I, again, I would ask that you approve it, thank you.
All right, you're all set? Anything in summary, okay? The time is eight forty-four, I declare this public hearing closed and we will make a decision. In the future. Okay? You're welcome, have a good evening, folks. All right, the time is eight forty-four, moving on to agenda item number five, public hearing beginning at seven PM, May twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, City Hall Auditorium. Room two eighteen, one forty, Main Street, Torrance, Connecticut, folks, we're still conducting a meeting here, please bring it outside. Five A, proposed change of zone map, applicant Hutton Street, twenty-one LLC, location nineteen Hillside Avenue with thirty-one Hillside Avenue. Proposal change zone map to local business LB currently R six, again, that'll be May twenty-fourth. Moving on to agenda item number six, old business, we have none. Moving on to agenda item number seven, new business, A, proposed change of zone map. Applicant two forty-two South Main Street LLC, location two forty-two South Main Street. Proposal change zone map to local business LB, it's currently R six, we need to set a public hearing date, the suggested date is June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Oppose, so move. Moving on to agenda item number seven B, proposed change of zone map, applicant Maria Seymour, Brooklyn Memorial, Inc. Location thirty-four Wilson Avenue, proposal change zone map to downtown district, DD currently R six. Set public hearing date, the suggested date is June fourteenth, twenty-three, do I have a motion?
So move, Tom Tom.
All those in favor? Oppose, so move. All right, moving on to agenda item number eight, correspondence, A, zoning and white violation update.
We have. Yep, you have, you have copies of both, uh, should be, should have been in your packet that was sent out. For the week, if you have any specific questions, as usual, just.
Thank you, Jeremy. Moving on to agenda item number eight B, draft regulation amendment discussion, section six point ten. Bed and breakfast, section five point eighteen, outdoor dining.
Um, everybody should have a copy in in front of them, I just actually finished touching them up this afternoon, um. So, uh. One, the the, I bring up the bed and breakfast regulations, because I've been kind of looking at that one for a while, um. There's a lot of repetitiveness in our, uh, in our regulations, um, and and they're just kind of. You know, confusing at 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 best, so there was sort of two reasons for doing this, one was to clean up the regulations. Um, and the other one was to, uh, kind of set up, um. Contrast between what a bed and breakfast, the boarding house, a hotel and a short term rental was. Um, in the, in the definitions. So we don't currently regulate short term rentals, but I wanted to make sure we had a definition of one. Just for that, for that contrast, so if. Um, our staff has to do enforcement on one or the other, we know, we know where our definitions land. So. Where's my, I don't even have my copy.
Didn't the state do something with outdoor dining?
Yeah, so so I, but I was going to say, outdoor dining are are basically updates to compliant state law, the state law changes.
Yeah.
But I I kind of wanted to drill down on this bed and breakfast thing, because, uh. Because this is sort of a, an in-house change, uh, we sort of had this hole where we we were allowing it. Lowing bed and breakfast from R sixty all the way down to to downtown district, but we weren't allowing them in R fifteen and R ten. Which they make a whole lot of sense to me, so I added them in as. As special exception approvals. They were, I think you're, you were R ten S.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so so R fifteen and R ten were like, I I I said, why, why are we allowing these in all the other zones and not those? They are, they're they're still running under the same requirements. Um, and what I did, the, you'll see on the second or third, well, it's a few, a couple pages in, but it's the old six, ten, one. Um, I eliminated that section in the whole, um. Four zones into one requirement to try to simplify things. Um, there is not a lot of difference between R ten, R ten S, R fifteen and R fifteen S. Um, we had separate categories, I rolled those all into one. And that's, that's really about it, I changed, I changed the maximum length of stay to sort of mirror what other towns do, we. We had that, we used to have a fourteen, no more than fourteen days in any thirty day period. Um, for for stays in bed breakfast, I I lengthened that out to ninety day, because I think most towns go by seasons.
Jeremy, just a comment about the the B and B, an owner occupied residential structure.
Yes.
That consists of a room.
That's the important distinction from the other ones.
How about some added verbiage that? It's owner occupied while you're. Having a room rented.
Yeah, yeah.
There's cases out there where you could say, come to B and B and, you know, hey, see you later, coffee pot's over there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, who's going to make the breakfast for you?
Well, you know what, they leave muffins and stuff up, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't know, we're splitting hairs.
No, we, you know, uh, I I. No, we, you know, uh, while, we, we could say while in operation or something like that.
Yeah.
You know.
Jeremy, Jeremy, it's Diane. I have a question for you on that. So the three that we have in town or whatever the count is, two or three, that, nothing's changing with those. They're all living compliant.
So it would actually, one of the, you make a good point. One of the other adjustments I made, we had this really odd one hundred and forty-five feet of frontage requirement. And I think that was to allow one of the bed and breakfast. I, I hate doing that. So I, I brought it, I actually brought it down to one hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage to, to match, to match those, what, what's allowed and the, kind of the other uses in those zones. Um, I didn't really see a need for specifically for bed and breakfast to have it that much different. Um, we already have a minimum lot size, which is larger than, than the, the minimum lot size for other uses and I left that in place. So to your, to your question, it would actually make them more conforming, I guess, if that makes any sense.
Okay.
Diane, even back in the day when I applied, my property at four ten the Orienton Road is actually, uh, a bed and breakfast classification.
Right.
All records. At the time, even with the parameters in place, you know, doing our due diligence that we weren't kind of like spot zoning, if you will, and, you know, looking for a a special privilege. You know, we pointed out there was multiple other properties in the area, in town that would fall under those same parameters, square footage, lot sizes, frontage and so forth.
Yeah.
That we were proposing, you know, just so we weren't a standalone entity. There were, again, there was you know, four, five, six other properties in close proximity that were allowed.
So, so just to add though, I went through, there was two, there was, there was the one in twenty twelve. And there was another one back in two thousand nine where we, where we did regulation amendments. I kind of studied those, so I, so I had an idea of what we were talking about then. Um, and, and kind of build that into what, what I didn't touch, you know, what, what we didn't want to touch and, and things that could, that could be adjusted. In the, in the end, the big thing was, was simplifying the regulations um, in, in multiple. So you'll see, like, for an example, you'll see from section, uh, there's section four in here somewhere. Yeah, the, the section four stuff, it was all repeated again in section six. So all I, all I did was eliminated a bunch of stuff and said for bed and breakfast facilities, see section six point one. So we, so we weren't just like having things in multiple places.
Yep.
Now, so there was some, just cleanup involved with this too, so.
Just a quick question. Remember, there was something that was coming to mind.
Yes.
In the office earlier. With the, the side yard submax. There's a minimum size.
Yeah.
What happens if the property's pre-existing non-conforming to a lot?
So we, and, and our buffer regulations allow us to be flexible. I don't know, I don't think these, these regulations allow us to be flexible with buffers. So when we do, when we, when we're gonna convert a house to bed, to a bed and breakfast, they're gonna just have to meet that or get variance. I mean, it's, it's essentially a use variance, which we, we never should grant, but.
Right.
I mean, a lot of these, the, the point of bed and breakfast is usually to have, to have a larger parcel of land.
Right.
So they, the majority of them should be meeting their buffers. Um, which are, for most properties are fifteen feet unless they're really, unless they're in the.
Well, does it meet that buffer or the buffer that's allocated in that specific zone?
So all of the smaller zones, R tens, R fifteens, all that, they're all, they're all fifteen feet.
Yeah, okay.
The, the rest of them are, um, twenty-five feet.
Eight feet, twenty.
Those are the larger, the larger parcels. Or the larger zone. Uh, for, for LB, for local business in downtown district, it just follows the standard, whatever they're.
Jeremy, if I could just have one more question or comment. So, yeah, the bed and breakfast, obviously it's a good conversation, but right now in this day and age, Airbnb is, is where everyone's going. So, and I do get, you know, when I'm talking with buyers, they are, they all, a lot of them will ask me, is this, you know, can I Airbnb this? So I guess what is the, you know, can anybody Airbnb their house? I guess is my basic question.
Yes, because we don't regulate them right now.
Okay. Is that anything that's gonna be changing, do you think?
Well, it's really up to this commission, but what I can say as, as an apartment, we don't have, we don't really have a lot of complaints over Airbnbs.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't really change the overall use of the property. So if it's a single-family house.
Right.
It is a single-family house.
But you're running a business out of a house.
Right. And, and, you know, for the most part, they, they do get around paying occupancy taxes and stuff.
Right.
Hell's charge.
Well, that was a, a point of, uh, at the acquiture a few years ago. I don't know if you're part of that meeting.
Usually went to those, yeah.
There was a speaker that brought up this, the situation of say a hotel motel owner versus the B and B or the Airbnb scenarios that, you know, for example, a room is costing one fifty a night at the hotel and Mary Smith is renting her place out for seventy-two dollars. And basically probably making more money than the hotel chain because she's not paying any taxes or any.
Right.
So, you know, burden that goes with it.
Well, it's just that I know in, in the last, I don't know, probably under six years, there was, in a subdivision, there was a homeowner that was Airbnb-ing their property and they were doing it sometimes for a couple hours or you know, something that wasn't legit, obviously. But there was a lot of party and I, neighbors were complaining, so.
And, and that's normally what happens and just we, we've been we've been getting those, those complaints and that's sort of the way, that's sort of the way, you know, Marty dealt with it and and how I've continued to kind of watch things is, is are we getting so many complaints that we need to start regulating these?
Okay.
I mean, if the commission thinks it's, it's worthwhile, we can, I, I, you know, I can, I can look into it.
Yeah.
But I just, I wanted, I, the important part was I wanted to have a definition so we could contrast what all these different types of rentals were. So we, so we knew the difference if, if it ever came up.
Okay.
How does that overlap though? Basically, I have a house, I'm Airbnb-ing it.
Yeah.
And again, basically it's a business, but you're not allowed business use in that zone. So yeah, it's kind of catch twenty-two, right?
Yeah, the way that, that is kind of the way we've looked at it is you're, you're getting, I guess you're getting income, but the use you, the, the occupancy of the, of the dwelling hasn't changed.
Right.
You could be, you could have a two-family house and you're renting out one floor. It doesn't change if it's a two-family.
So what they did at the paper is they, they changed the rules. Basically, you have to now um, get a permit to be able to rent your house.
Yeah, and we, that's what we would do if we adopted a regulation.
You have to pay all of the same fees that a hotel pays. And, oh yeah, and now, you know, if you rent your house, first of all, if you rent it and you're, you don't have a permit, you're in trouble.
Where is this?
This is it.
You have to have, if you're renting it, you have to have like an agent on record.
They're making an equal, sort of saying, you're a homeowner, you're not making the same kind of money.
Right.
You shouldn't make the same kind of money. These are some.
Well, Rhode Island, they're trying to eliminate short-term rentals.
Yeah, that's what they're called.
Well, like, you know, I'm gonna run my house for the weekend or a week. Yeah.
So what I'm, what I'm passing, what I'm passing around that the people on Zoom can't see is, uh, is it it's a website called AirDNA and it aggregates, it aggregates not just Airbnb, but the other sites that rent. All the dots on the map are, are the ones that are being actively rented.
I mean, I think at some point you're gonna have to address it, but to your point, Jeremy, I think what you're saying is, until I have a problem, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
You know, so, you know, we don't need to get crazy.
Yeah.
I think it's good stuff that you kind of looked at it and, yeah, fine.
Sort of aligning things.
Yeah, so I'm trying to at least get the definitions out. So if we gotta do enforcement, we know what we're enforcing, you know, because it's, okay, this is the short-term rental. We don't really have a regulation, but maybe you're running a big boarding house.
Yeah.
You know? Because it means the definition.
Yeah.
So um, if uh, I mean, I was gonna suggest that we separate this and, and set it for the second meeting in June. And we can have, like, give people time to look at it and flesh it out and we really I mean, we, we'll put it online two or three weeks before the meeting, um, but, but we, it will give us a few weeks to to review and make any suggestions for, for edits. Is that really, this really isn't, you know, we're not, we're not following any state guidelines or weird state laws or anything. This is a local, this is a local.
You're talking June twenty-eighth meeting.
June twenty eighth, yeah. Yeah, the, uh, the other, the outdoor dining regulation is pretty straightforward. We're, I, I I, uh, said, I basically separated, you know, like the only thing I did besides following state law was separated, um, I walk dining from, diet, from, from outdoor dining off city, city land.
Oh, okay. So you, oh, okay. So you define.
I kind of separated the two in the same, in the same section, right? Just, they, they weren't, they, they don't make sense lumped together.
Yeah.
So I just kind of pulled them apart. They all, they, they have some overlapping requirements that I put as general. And then specific requirements that I pulled out for each one. Because they're a little, they're, you know, they're slightly different.
So are we gonna ever consider, I mean, I don't know if the town has ever thought about it, but you know, what, what started, they first have a big enough road to do it, but they, they approach on the road during.
Oh, and then in the parking spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think, I think the state would have something to say.
Not only that, we're dying for parking to be going.
Yeah.
Can't afford to give up.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
So.
You could stand there until somebody wants to park, then you gotta move.
Right.
The big thing that sticks out that Greg and I talked about before, before the meeting was, uh, we cannot disallow, um, like some sort of outdoor dining on a private property across parking spaces. Basically, we throw our parking minimums out the window. Yeah, we can't, we can't say no if they want to put it across parking spaces. It's the way the state wrote the law. We can, however, say not in travel lanes. So, so they could be, um, say in front of a building, our parking spots, but we can't, we can't edge out into the middle of the park, the middle of the parking lot. You just couldn't even drive in there. I mean. So, so, I mean, for outdoor dining, basically our, our parking minimums are out the window.
Yeah.
Or, or whatever. So the one thing is you'll notice, uh, a new Cajun boil there. Um, I went to the, you know, the Cajun boil restaurant, they put, they put a deck. Luckily, they, they still met their parking minimums, but they put a wood deck out over the parking spaces on the side of the building. Kind of without us knowing. Uh, we had them come back in for permits later, but they still met their parking minimums, so we didn't have to make, rip it out.
Yeah. To your knowledge, what has the state liquor commission acted on, of course, CD like that? So typically, you know, for example, Edison.
Yeah.
They had to get a patio permit.
Yeah.
They won years ago.
Yeah.
A lot of outside that.
So the way, the way the law is written is if, basically if they stretch out over the parking spaces, as long as they have that separation, they.
It's an extension.
Just an extension of the indoor.
Yeah, it's a, they, it's basically the way the law is written, this liquor commission has to allow.
Yeah.
Right. Unless there's, unless there's like violations with this particular. Yeah, right. This is a continuation of the COVID policy, yeah. But they, yeah, I mean, the big thing for us is parking minimums are.
Right.
But the only thing we can, one thing we can do is, is, and this is in the state law, April first to October thirty-first.
That's it.
So they have to come out. They can't be permanent. They have to come out every year.
Right.
So, um, no, they, and I have that in the regulation, no permanent structures can be, can be instructed. They have to use their parking, their parking spots over the winter. But.
Do you want us to make a motion to?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind scheduling schedules.
Like to have a motion to schedule in, uh, the draft regulation amendment discussion for section six point ten bed and breakfast and section five point eighteen outdoor dining for our meeting on June twenty-eight, twenty-three.
So move.
All those in favor?
Hi.
So move. Moving on to agenda item number nine, adjournment. The time is nine oh four.
So move.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thanks for your support.
Thank you.